I'm gonna call the meeting in order at six thirty. And this is the, this is the meeting for the special meeting for corporate, corporate authorities. Madam Speaker, if you call the law.
Here. Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Jones.
Here.
Trustee Tate. Trustee Todd, here.
Okay, item number two. Uh, the appointment of liquor commissioner. Uh, the reason why I brought this and put this on the, as a special meeting was because prior to, to, um, the last election, we had a liquor commissioner slash assistant slash, um, I don't even know what to call it, but it was an appoint, it was a, uh, a position that, uh, there wasn't, he wasn't the mayor, the mayor chose not to be liquor commissioner, so he appointed someone. So, I will be the liquor commissioner and, um, all the licenses will go through the mayor now. It won't be anything that's, uh, that's appointed, so I just wanted to basically use that for informational purposes. Uh, that has to be voted on, it's just, that's one of the duties of the mayor, to be the liquor commissioner, so I just wanted to let the board know that, uh, I will be resuming that position. Any questions? Okay, item number three. The transfer of fifty thousand dollars from the water and sewer fund to the general fund. Um, that was done because we haven't got enough money yet from our allotment from the, from the, uh, income tax. So, we had to make sure, and as I stated before, every time we transfer money, we're not gonna try our best not to do it through consensus or over the phone, and we're gonna try to do it the proper way and vote it out, but we need to do this. I just wanted everyone to, if they had any questions, to, uh, be able to ask Mohan at this particular point in time, not put him on a hot seat, but if there's anything that you want to explain, um, now's the time. Trustee Jones.
Is this solely, is this mainly to do with, um, we're still under the old budget? Or is this a trend that we're still gonna try to roll, we're gonna run down?
Yes, it's gonna be under the new budget. And, uh, moving forward, before answering, I will ask for permission, we are the meeting. So, the, after having said, the fifty thousand dollars is going to be rolled forward, whatever we have, right now, we have borrowed one point nine million dollars as of a couple days ago, so this is going to be in addition to one point nine million dollars moving forward, this fifty thousand.
Uh, Mr. Mohan, you indicated-
You gotta use the mic, please.
I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Mohan, you indicated that we can get income taxes, you anticipate we're gonna get that?
Uh, we are gonna get it probably after three months. We, we are behind three months. State incompletes, the state will withhold the income tax, but did not give it to the village right away, because it will hold on to three months, so we are behind three months.
Okay, so once we get the income tax in, we're gonna repay-
We-
-that the plan.
I will try to repay back, but there's no hundred percent guarantee, because it may be delayed after three months also. Generally, it is for three months, but provided if we are funds available at that time, we will move it back to our sewer fund.
Thank you.
Question. Um, with the fifty thousand to transfer, say that we do get the money from the state, so we don't necessarily need the fifty thousand, is it, do you keep it there just in case it will be in the future, or do you always roll it back and leave it in the general, in the waterfront?
As, as I said before, the, whenever the funds available in general fund, it will be returned back to the water sewer fund.
Any other questions? Okay, um, item number four, public comment from the, uh, audience. Uh, each speaker may have comment on the special meeting agenda only. Each speaker will be allowed one opportunity to speak. Does anyone have anything? Okay. Um, I will- I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some moves.
Okay.
Some moves.
So, means effect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posits? Motion carried. We adjourn until seven o'clock for our regular meeting. Thank you. Like to call the meeting in order, if you stand for the flag.
We declare the United States of America, and which is founded, and which is ranked, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
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 Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session with the action to be taken.
Yes.
Yes.
Brewer. Yes.
Trustee Grant. Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
And motion accepted, we will be right back. Madam Speaker, we're back to order.
Trustee Brewer. Yes. Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Jones.
Here.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Okay, item, um, number two, public comment. All, all questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker will be given three minutes to comment. Each speaker will be allowed one opportunity to speak. Hearing none? Okay. Is that working?
My name is Jackie Blais, I would like to know if you have any plans on replacing any of the missing signs, like no parking on the side of the street, um, no parking after two inches of snowfall, um, speed signs behind, there are very few required.
Can you talk into the mic?
I would like to know if you're going to remove that orange fence behind Village Hall. It looks like trash, and there's no reason for people there. There are no fences around any of the other towns in the village, or any other village. I would like to know when you are going to give the grass cut and leave the houses, especially the houses on the floors. That's what, that'd be high, nicest way I can put it, jump out and grab people, or the kids hiding in the corner houses. I would like to know why they, the seniors leave, senior groups leave the senior center, except two groups, why are they still there? I would like to know why you're not using the E-blast. That's the only way people that don't come to this meeting find out what's going on. Nobody knew there was cop on the top. It should've been put on the E-blast. Now I have been told that you're not gonna do anything for Fourth of July, you're not gonna have a parade, fireworks, or anything. Is this true, and why? That's all I have.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, replacing the street signs, that's an ongoing process. Um, if yours has been out for a while, I'm sure that's why we have the department heads here. Uh, we have the department head here tonight from Public Works, I'm sure he took notes down, so, and then that's still an ongoing process. This, just because it's down doesn't mean it's not gonna happen, but that's ongoing, so those will be done at the, um, time of when the Public Works Department has a chance to get to that, but you have to buy the signs there, so it's not like it's gonna be done right away, but yes, that will be worked on. Uh, removal of the orange fence that's right here in this, uh, detention, that's a detention pine. Uh, I know it keeps falling down, but we have to have a deterrent there, so no one can get hurt, fall in it, or whatever, so we have to have something there, we just have to continuously keep putting it up there, and keep going back to fix it, but it's something that if we take it down, it'll be worse than what you have right now. Cutting up the grass in the, um, vacant homes, uh, that's also something that we have to do. Uh, we have part timers that, that are right on it, but we don't, I cannot tell you that we're gonna get this one done right now, but that's also an everyday ongoing process. So, when they get around to it, and you already know that it does happen, it's not like we never cut it, but it does happen, but it happens on schedule, we have, we have a schedule for that. The senior center, you said that it was closed, it's in, right now, we're updating and upgrading, we're putting policies together, so it's not a matter that we just put everybody out. But I don't know if you was over there to see how many, how much stuff came out of there over the years, so they're cleaning it out now, it's gonna be new policy, everything's gonna be put back. I don't understand what you say, there's two groups that are still there, no one's meeting there right now until after everything is put back, and, I'm sorry, after the policies are set, and they have meetings, and then they'll do that intelligently. So, no, there's no, I don't know where you said two groups are still there, no one is there right now at this particular point in juncture.
Ceramics didn't take your stuff off, neither those two.
But you said they were still there. They're in the process, like I said, it didn't happen overnight, all that, that got there took years to get there, so it's gonna take a few minutes for us to take, to make sure that happened. E-blast, E-blast, I have to get someone on that, right now, I don't have anyone on that, we still have our website, but I have to get the names and the E-blast emails, that was not given to us. So, either we have to make up our own, or start another one, because the names and the, the email, um, addresses were not given to us, so there's no way for us to even have an E-blast. And as far as Fourth of July, um, right now, there may be plans, I don't know if it's gonna happen on the Fourth, because I don't see where we have the money, but there's gonna be a celebration soon in the village, but I'm not, I'm not gonna tell you that it's gonna happen on the Fourth of July, but it will happen. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ernestine Blackman, it's just good to meet, um, the people who's gonna help, uh, make our village, uh, better. Uh, my name is Ernestine Blackman, and I'm glad to meet the people who's gonna help make our village, uh, better. I have some concerns, you know, about, uh, I live at, um, sixteen oh nine Constance, and we have two houses that is vacant, and I mean, the grass is growing up almost all the way up to the top of the house, and I think that those houses are, are dangerous, I mean, anybody could, could come in there and do any kind of crime, and I think that those things need to be addressed, and I also think that, um, we have dead trees and stuff that, that need, those trees need to calm down. So, those is one of my concerns, that I'm kinda ashamed to have anybody know where I live, because it just look terrible, it looks bad on our street, so that needs to be really addressed, and I am a taxpayer, and I want my place to look nice where I live, so thank you.
First of all, thank you, Ms. Blackman, and, um, the name sounds weird, I don't know why it's right. Yes, I do. Anyway, um, I just wanted to tell you that that's why the department heads are coming back to the meeting. Just now, I, I saw the Public Works Director taking notes now, so believe me, that's duly noted, it's something that will be addressed. When, I cannot tell you, but as I stated before, most of the vacant homes, if not all, we do address them some type of way. We don't get any money back from them, we're trying to, but you're right, it is a hazard. We're trying to get people involved, as far as, I won't say volunteers, but summer help, to help with that process, so it was noted about your vacant, and then your tree, are the trees you talking about right there by you?
There were one of the trees that I came up here, I had, came up here for about two years, because one of the trees was on my house, and I just got tired of it, and I just got to cut down myself. And another thing too, I also wanna address, like these houses that are burnt, y'all need to get those houses down, because they are making the village, the village look really bad, and you need to have these homeowners be accountable to their property, because we are taxpayers around here, and the Four and Heights Place can look real good, this one can too, this is not a bad place to live, but we need to be more concerned about where we live, and take authority, and get all this stuff fixed instead of a lot of promises.
No, you, and you, and you know something?
You know, because-
You're a thousand percent right, because I don't like the fact, not only just it looks horrible, it's not safe, especially homes that burnt down, so I have been talking, to try to see if we can get grant or some money to have them at least taken down, those homes that are just held up by whatever. But that, that's something that really is something that we've talked about, and, um, this board is committed to the beautification of this village, 'cause we cannot have any development, economic, anything until, you know, we, we start showing that we're doing something.
Whenever you get a chance, just ride down or past houses that, the grass is, it's growing, it's terrible, you get snakes, rats, and all kinds of animals, that, that looks bad.
Okay, I, I mean, I don't wanna go back and forth, but you, but you're right, we're right. Thank you.
We gonna look for that.
Yes. Thank you.
My name is, uh, President, uh, seen access.
Your last, the clerk asked the last name, please.
Good morning, Kelly, that's our, your team. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, when is, how do you get back into the senior building when it opened up? I wanna know the procedure. Do you get application of what, senior application of what?
Is that your only question?
That's my only question.
Okay, that procedure will be discussed with a trustee Brewer, and, um, once she gets all of that taken care of, believe me, it will be disseminated throughout the village, we'll have it on the website, we'll have it up here at Village Hall, they may call a meeting, so we can get this process going as soon as possible, as far as getting it back in, but they're trying to make it, uh, policy now, they're, they're trying to, they only had a week, so they're trying to make a policy now, so we can be fair to each and every person that wants to be part of, not just come back, but be part of the senior commission, I mean, senior center.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, good evening. Sharon Archie Davenport, two sixteen thirteen, Galen. Welcome, Mr. Mayor, I haven't seen you since you've been elected and sworn in.
Thank you.
To get that out, congratulations to you guys, I love you so much. I have a question from a resident, uh, she would like to utilize the park, Welsh Park, to, for, to have her and her children, her husband, family come out and do a barbecue for this weekend, and I told her that I don't know if you have changed policy or set policy in the past, you, anyone was welcome to come out and utilize the park, and they wanna have the little grill or whatever, they could, but if they wanted, but it would be open to the public, but if they wanted it to be private, then they had to pay a fee, so I told her, since I was up here, I would double check, and check that, run that past you.
Okay, um, you're hard right, but I'm gonna direct you into the proper way. Trustee Jones is here, he's in charge of parks and recs, if you get with him after the meeting, he can tell you precise procedure to make that happen, but that, I don't think it should be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Moore, his address is-
Mr. Frank Howard.
Now, his address is two twenty five twenty one Jeffrey, but the building is behind him, is the one that, he didn't know the exact address, but it's a different, you know, it's like on two hundred and twenty fifth place. I think he said something like, uh, seventeen fifty something, he thanked, you know, it's been a long time since he was able to see the address, so, but it's right behind him.
And, and, Mr. Mr. Howard, what did you want us to do, that's, I, 'cause I, you know, I have-
I was just wanting, he wanted to know, uh, could he have, could you have, put and work to somebody to cut that down?
The grass?
It ain't grass, it's bushy and stuff.
Okay, two twenty, two two five two one Jeffrey?
Right, so they got coon, and possum, and everything, and his wife is scared, he had to be there working a lot of time, they just come to your city.
May cook the possum, but yeah, okay. I will, I'm passing along, thanks a lot, and, yes, sir.
Mayor Burgess, uh, when I first moved here years ago, we had no-
I'm sorry, could you state your name for the record, sir?
Mr. Lewis, L E W I S.
Okay, sir.
When I moved here years ago, we had no need, 'cause there wasn't that much crime, burglarizing, et cetera, in this village. Neighborhood watch came in about five years ago, and it did make a difference. I understand now that you're disbanding it, so what are your alternative, uh, plans? You don't think we need a neighborhood watch? Is crime going down that much, burglaries, drug selling, is it going down that much?
Is that it?
No, you haven't told me anything.
No, I'm asking you, is that all your question?
No, 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 I think you should, I think you should also get maybe some more code enforcers, maybe part-time.
Anything else?
Yes, Jeffrey. Saw Trail to Two Seventeenth, there's been lights out for the last three and a half years, and they have called the village on it. You can look, it's on the east side of the street, I almost had a kid over there about two years ago, right where the library is, in the rural months, and I called the village, and I got every excuse that they could not do it because the ground was frozen, then I heard it was the county's responsibility. Then I heard it was the village's responsibility, they're gonna do it when the ground loss. Still not done, three years, why? That's all I got to ask you, but I, I'd like to have your reply about it.
I'm just saying, is that all?
That's it.
'Cause we're not, because we, okay, first of all, the, um, I'm gonna deal with the last, the lights, we just had, I just had a meeting-
Yeah.
-with Tom Ed, and me and the Public Works Director, and we're gonna address that issue, a lot of it may be the village, but it's gonna take time to do that, and you're absolutely right, they've been out for a while, not just in your area, another area.
Yeah, it was done with Carol too. Go ahead, sorry.
So, so, we're gonna take, and we're gonna address that issue ASAP because of the issue of being unsafe at night.
Okay.
So, that's, that's what you're concerned, so like I stated before, we've already talked about that. Um, as far as part-time or code, that's something that we have a new budget coming up, that's something I'm hoping that we as a board can, can do, because we do lead code. They have one person in code, that's something I've always stated that we need to, we have to put that into the budget, and the budget hasn't even been disseminated yet, so we will be looking at, at that, at that issue. And your last one, where you first-
Well, that was the main one that I came up here for, it was about the neighborhood watch.
It's the neighborhood watch. You said the neighborhood watch deters crime, is that what, I'm just-
Yes, it does.
I'm not going back and forth.
It does.
Okay. If we're not gonna debate on that part, but I've already talked to the police chief, and he's gonna have a program that he's gonna start. It may not be called neighborhood watch, it would be neighborhood involvement.
Right.
Be caught, because the reason for it that being is, we wanna make sure that the police department is on board with this, that we don't put anybody's personal life in jeopardy as being a, a resident, the police are there to protect us as a, as, as residents, they are licensed and duly charged to do that. So, with something that, it's not that we abandoned it, I wasn't gonna start it, I needed to talk to the chief, and I have talked to the chief, and, and I would say within a month's time, he's gonna have somebody go present to this board and to the village for that reason, before it does get too hot outside, but as far as bringing neighborhood watch back at this particular point in time, I don't, I don't, I, right now, I want the police to do their job, and, and they're going to do their job.
Right, as long as it gets, gets taken.
I'm not, nobody can sit here and tell you that it's gonna deter crime, neighborhood watch, anything else, it does not deter crime. People do, people deter crime, people, you know that.
Well, I'll tell you what the main problem was-
I'm not going back and forth, sir, I just said, I, 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 I listened to what you had to say, but we're not gonna debate, but I, I, if I ask you where you threw with your questions, so we can, so I can let you know, give you the information that I have, so you can understand what it is I'm coming from.
Can I say one thing, my opinion?
If we go back and forth, I do it for everybody.
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna do that.
I'm not gonna do that. If I, we're not gonna go back and forth, sir.
I, I know, but what I wanna just say, a lot of this stuff, neighborhood watch was due to the housing over here, that's where the drugs came in, unscrupulous landlords are picking up these homes under market. The village didn't even know sometimes who was living, who, who was living in those buildings, who owned them. There was one person over there in the village on my block, I talked with her, she was a Mexican woman, she asked me if I knew who the landlord was, I said, no, she said, well, I've been paying him rent.
Can I, can I ask you this?
Yes.
If you wanna go forward with that and talk more, can you see me after the meeting? I'm not gonna-
Oh, sure.
But I'm not gonna, I can't do that, because then I'll have to do it for everybody.
Okay, great.
But I will, I will be here after the meeting, sir.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Backing up on what Mr. Lewis said about neighborhood watch, anybody that thinks that the neighborhood watch program anywhere in the world does not make a difference in a community, that's delusional. Everybody knows that neighborhood watch is very essential in any community worldwide. Neighborhood watch is a nationwide program that the police department and any other police entity love to have to work in conjunction with them, and because I chaired neighborhood watch, I'm gonna say that we did work with the police department in Saw Village, I don't wanna use my three minutes for that. When I came out of my house yesterday, I saw three big rocks in front of my house on the current, three big rocks like this, I have no need to have big rocks in front of my house, I took a picture of those rocks, and I put it with the file that I already sent to the FBI, I've already no, uh, indicated to the police chief of Saw Village, if anything happens to me, or my house, or my cars, or my property, anybody who I feel is a threat to my life in any kind of way, I have their pictures, their names, their children's names, everything that's been written about me on Facebook, I snapshot it all, so I'm letting you know, I'm not gonna be bullied, nobody's gonna tell me what to say, nobody's gonna put fear in my heart to speak on behalf of residents, there are hundreds of residents that stand with me, although they're not here tonight, that's afraid to come and speak up, and talk up about what's going on on their block and their neighborhoods, and it's a travesty. We have a new administration, and people should feel free to come and talk to the elected officials, and to the mayor, and to the clerk, that's what elected officials are there for, you are there to serve the public. When I was the trustee, people called us bobbleheads, because they felt we agree with everything that the mayor said, now I hear everybody agree with whatever the mayor said, but I guess they are not bobbleheads, so, it's totally different. On the agenda, new business, A to Z, I see tonight you're making a motion to approve an ordinance to establish a position for Economic Development Director, if we don't have any money, why are we hiring people? We don't have any money, why are we hiring secretaries and economic developers?
One moment.
Thank you, I heard that, I heard, um, you say tonight that there is no money, if we, if this, I also heard you say, for later, ask about the lights, something about economic development, then if we don't have any economic- Then if we don't have any economic development, why are we hiring the economic development now? We don't need that today, we can hire economic development a month from now. That's my opinion, and I'm entitled to say that. Also, I just want to say to, um, anyone that is interested to know, we do have an organization, Saw Village, for informative dialogue, we was blackballed and not able to use the rotunda or any municipal building last night, and we will be going downtown, just like they did, to get permission to use that senior building because we should be able to use these buildings, and whatever we have to go through to use them, as taxpayers, that's what we're going to do.
Thank you.
Uh, glad to see you meeting, I'm Vice Chair, May eleven. You and your appointed chairperson came in and said we were going to work together. We were going to work together. We set up a special meeting for May fif, uh, May fifteenth. What happened? May twelfth, we get a letter that everything is canceled. The letter was dated May eleventh. You knew when you came into that meeting that there was going to be nothing. Everything had to be out of the senior building by May eighteenth, everything. All committees, all groups, we got our stuff out, and what happens? Ceramics moved into it. So if we do resent the letter to come back in, we don't have our space anymore. Is that right? Also, did you know last Tuesday, there was a BMW motorcycle group that had their meeting? They weren't even notified that the village's, uh, senior center was closed. Ms. Brewer said it wasn't her concern. Also, uh, we asked for one more meeting for the Bluegrass because we have people coming in from all over, fifty, seventy-five miles away, that we don't have their contact. They came in to go to Bluegrass Sunday night, just two days after everything is closed down. They couldn't even come in because they couldn't get the key to get in. No posting nowhere that the village's senior center was closed. Why was that? It still isn't posted that it's closed. It should be up on the marquee, it should be on the senior door. The motorcycle group went over to the, uh, to the police department to get the key, they come back. The key didn't work. I happened to be standing out there, and I told them that the village hall was closed because of cockroaches. And you want to know who started that rumor? It was your new chairperson. She told Bluegrass that it was infested with cockroaches and mice. If you don't believe me, I've got paperwork. Mr. Lorach said it was cockroaches in there. Several others said cockroaches in there. If you want the paperwork, I got it. Thank you.
I think last week I did, um, speak on why the senior center was separately closed, that I don't think I need to say anymore because all it does is just go round and around. So with that being said, it will be, and it's going to be reopened, there's going to be policies in place. I'm sorry that you felt that it was closed wrong, but I mean, it's, we had to do something because there was just too many different things going on that nobody knew about. So I, I have to say to the seniors, I'm sorry for the inconvenience for one month, and it is only going to be one month.
Seven weeks.
Ms. Ketchum, please, I'm going to respect you every step, every step of the way, I'm going to do that. I will respect you, but I'm going to demand respect also. I'm not going to yell at you, I'm not going to yell anything out at you, ma'am, but I appreciate if you will respect this board, that's all I'm asking. But I will try my best to explain to you that that was the reason. That was the reason why we did, it was nothing aimed at any one person. It was something that we needed to take a hold of, we should have been doing it years ago, that's all, ma'am. It's not trying to, to push any one group, person, or anything out. I know when I purged my house, I throw a lot of stuff out because I haven't had a chance to do it. And now all we're doing is just basically getting a hold of it, getting something that is going to be for all the residents. I understand thirty miles, sixty, seventy miles away, and I appreciate them coming out, but we have to get a hold of the things so we can exactly know what's going on. Yes, ma'am.
Judy Cast here. The first two things that I want to mention are things that have been, um, on my mind for years, and they've been swept under the rug for years. And with the new budget coming out, I'd like to know if there's a possibility that these would at least get a thought. Our police pension fund has not received any money in many, many years, and the village owes them a whole lot. I'm not going back as far as to who started it, who's at fault, or anything else. I'm just saying that it needs to be taken care of. I also, with the last administration, stuck my neck in the news and brought out the fact that there was, um, mold in the police station. Supposedly that's taken care of, and we're supposed to take that as gospel. I'm sorry, but I don't take things as gospel. Has it been checked out? Is the mold gone? Is there still water seepage in there every time we get rain? Have they been checking to see if the mold has not returned or not? Those are the two main things that I'm concerned about, and, um, would appreciate hearing about them. I also would like to know, um, tonight's a regular board meeting, there's no attorney here. Are the attorneys going to not be here like they used to be, or what's going on with that? As to department heads, it's a pleasure to see them here. I appreciate them being here, and I appreciate being to ask questions that they can answer and not somebody that has to ask them later on. The, um, senior center, I understand what you're saying about that-
One minute.
But I would like to know, is there a committee? Is, is somebody working with trustee Brewer to come up with these policies and changes and everything else? Are there changes made in, in the committee that was there, are they still there? What's going on with that so that people know what to do? That's it.
Okay. First of all, the pension fund is something that we are addressing with the new budget, and you're absolutely right, we haven't paid it in years, not going to sit here and tell you that it's going to be paid up this year, but we're going, we're going to be working on it and incorporate that in our budget, that we have to try because we do owe that money. That's an obligation that we have, and it has to be fulfilled. That's why the budget is going to be really, really, really scrutinized. As far as the police station mold, now you see, we, we have, we've had one meeting so far with the department heads, I have, and I went around the table. That's why, um, they're here, that's why they're here to take notes, and hopefully after the meeting, they can ask a question. But I'm not going to let it get browbeaten right now while we have the meeting, but I will tell you this, Ms. Cast. There's something in the works right now, the, to make sure that, that problem that we had there with the mold and everything is taken care of. And also, um, the police side of the, um, police station, where the officers are, is going to be renovated. Something right now that the police chief brought to me, and, uh, that's going to happen. So that, I was so glad of that because I've been in there, so, and other things that were, that were not happening are definitely going to happen. So yes, there's going to be more hands-on, we're going to take, ta, take care of the thing that, that was neglected, I'll just put it that way, over the years, I'm at the, um, village, maybe twelve hours, eleven hours a day, every day, and I'm watching a lot of different things, and, and that's the only way you can do it. It's the only way you can have, you can't just have somebody else take care of, you have to look at yourself. So I've been assessing, and I'm just going to let you know, that that, that problem over there is going to be addressed. As far as the attorney's not here, unless we need them, unless it's something that we need, which we will have them from here from time to time, that's some more money that we're trying to save. Because, I mean, for them to sit here, and if we don't really need them, I don't have that, we, I'm sorry, the board doesn't have that kind of money to, to, we can use it on other things. As far as the senior committee and the, um, senior center, I put someone in charge, and she's working those, that particular, um, verbiage up as we, as we speak. And she put out there at the meeting that was held when she, when I asked her to be appointed for that, that anyone that would like to apply for that position to be on the committee, please do so. So I'm saying again today for the record, if anyone would like to apply to be on the part, to be part of the senior committee, to be on the, be on the committee, please, before the night's out, after we adjourn, please see Ms. Trustee, uh, trustee Houston.
Can I take one second to thank Chief Paulski? The plan group would like to thank you for honoring us and volunteering and helping with cop on top. Um, it was a cold rainy day, but we enjoyed the day.
You lead me to it because that's on my report.
Rachel Levine. Um, I, a lot of times we're asking over and over to get things done, so I wanted to say that I was very happy and pleased to see that my swing set was finally taken care of, and it's completely out of the realm, completely safe, and the slide that I was worried about was taken care. So I wanted to say that I'm glad about that, because we always complain and complain, so it's good to hear the good things that we're doing. Um, I am excited to see what we are going to be doing and the new steps you guys will be taking. Um, I look forward to working with everybody, and hopefully everybody works together. And, um, also, um, I wanted to say that, um, the Neighborhood Watch, I was the secretary of board, so I'm hoping that this, whatever this next committee is, um, that it's somewhat of the same thing, and I'm not understanding exactly what it will be, um, but I do look forward to finding out what it is, and I don't know, maybe if you could tell me what it is exactly, I think that's it.
I'm going to let the chief do that when he, when he has that together. I'm not going to circumvent or take his thunder or micromanage him, so. Um, okay, approval of the minutes. So I'm sure there's a little more I understand up there. Um, I need, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special meeting minutes that were, um, for May ninth.
So.
It was motioned in second, any questions? Madam?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
May I go through the roll call one more time so that everyone can hear?
Sure.
Um, trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Sting.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion to approve the board meeting minutes for May ninth, two thousand seventeen, I'll entertain a motion. It was moved in second, moved by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Jones. Madam President, please call her up.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion to approve the inaugural board minute, meeting, I'm sorry, meeting minutes for, uh, May ninth. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Brewer. Madam President, please call her up.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, um, reports for, uh, mayor's report. Uh, at this time, I'd like to, um, ask for a motion to accept my, um, appointment of Elizabeth Zupan to fill the trustee vacant.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, and second by trustee Grant, that we filled the vacancy of the trustee with Elizabeth Zupan.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion carried, at this time, Madam President, would you please swear in and trust, I'm sorry, Elizabeth Zupan, would you please come forth?
Please raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Elizabeth Zupan.
I, Elizabeth Zupan.
Having been appointed-
Having been appointed.
-to the office of village trustee-
To the office of village trustee.
-in the village of Saw Village-
In the village of Saw Village.
-and the counties of Cook and Will of Forsyth-
And the county of Cook and Will of Forsyth.
-do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
-and the Constitution of the State of Illinois-
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
-and that I will faithfully-
And that I will faithfully-
-discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties.
-of the office of village trustee-
Of the office of village trustee.
-to the best of my abilities-
To the best of my abilities.
While they're doing that, because I know that, you know, I'm going to, um, I'm going to announce that, um-
May I do one other thing? I'm sorry, Mr. Well, because I do have to give her her tissue.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, you can do that at the end.
Okay, we'll do it.
Um, we're going to be taking bids, and it's going to be put on the website, it's going to be put out, disseminated out throughout the, um, um, area, um, for cleaning. Cleaning the village hall, village, all the village, um, buildings. So, um, that's something that's going to be out there, you can pick up the, anyone who wants to, um, bid for that, those bids, packets will be available at village hall starting tomorrow. So I just wanted to make that announcement. Um, the second announcement, now that trustee Elizabeth, what she likes to be called Beth Zupan, is here, I want to formally, uh, inform, which the trustees, most of them already know, we talked about it, their committee assignments. So starting down at my far left, trustee Grant will be, his committee will be Budget and Finance. Um, trustee Elizabeth Zupan will be Public Safety. Trustee Kelvin Jones, Parks and Recs and Youth Services. Trustee Cecil Tate, Housing and IGRC. Trustee Bernice Brewer, she has public service and the seniors. And only by far right, trustee Linda Todd will have ordinance and beautification. Now, I just wanted to make it cer, make, make it clear, the part for trustee Brewer and trustee Todd as far as seniors and beautification, that's not a standing committee, it's an ad hoc committee, however. I ask them to, to be in charge of that, which means they will be liaison for, for those committees. Beautification, quite naturally, is mostly all volunteers. I won't say mostly, it is all volunteers. And the seniors will be the same thing, that committee is all volunteers, there's no paid position, as in none of the other committees. But I just want to say tonight, I see a lot of people that are here, and I'm hoping that they, that they, since they want to see, and I'm hoping that this village moves together, that you try to get on the committee. We got, we got eight of them. So I'm hoping that, you know, you see one that you would like to get involved in, volunteer for, and see the trustee tonight after the meeting, then, uh, let them know that you'd like to be a part of their committee. Also, the auditors have started the audit for the year two sixteen and two twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. So they're here now, um, they've been here since yesterday, and, um, they're starting on that audit, which will probably take about three to four weeks to complete, but they're starting on the audit, which is a good thing. Because we have to try, we have to get ourselves back to a bond rating. As you know, the state doesn't have the money to do the things that they should be doing, I'm sorry, the state hasn't passed the budget, they have the money. They haven't passed the budget to release the money to the villages. That's why the villages are, are going, a lot of them are bankrupt, a lot of them are trying to borrow any way out of it. Well, we don't have that opportunity right now, so that's one of our goals, is to get back to a bond rating, we wouldn't have to pay so much money for the money that we borrowed. And also, the medium that's right here on, um, Saw Trail, is right there in front of, uh, McDonald's, that you see that was built, that's just a first curb, and they're gonna raise, in other words, they have another coating to be, to be disseminated there. And I don't know, um, I think our public works, um, director has, may have something to say further, but I just wanted to let you guys know that that's not, that's not the final. It's gonna be raised, I don't know how many inches it's gonna be raised, but the, the medium itself is gonna stay the same. All right, moving on, uh, village clerk, Barbara Taylor-Fruish.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things that I want to talk about. First, uh, just to inform of Six Flags discount rates that's being offered by the Southland, uh, mayors and managers association. Um, those discounts will take place June seventeenth and eighteenth, or July first through the fourth. There's fifty percent off for a cost of thirty-seven dollars per ticket, so if anyone is interested, you can contact them. Um, procedurally, we need a listing of all of the commissions, all committees where oaths have been taken and members are required to take or file the OMA training and those economic statements, because I have to, um, correlate whether or not we are in compliance. A number of people have been asked, um, about their economic statements this past week, and they are being charged, and they're not understanding why. So I have to attest whether or not they're still in, or if they were actually active in two thousand sixteen. So if anyone knows people who are on commissions, or if you were chairpersons, if you can get that information to me, I would greatly appreciate it. Um, in your mailbox today, I put, um, meeting reimbursement forms. They're to be completed monthly and turned in to Mike, and at that time, if you could give him the agenda, that would be wonderful as well. Uh, the minutes for your meetings, you can bring them to my attention quarterly, and that would be sufficient. Trustees requiring email access on your telephone, your tablet, your personal computers, that is your desire. Uh, but if you want that, please inform me, and I can work with IT to get that done. Not too long ago, I shared, uh, contact information for those of you who would be interested in traveling to IMLA. I'm asking that you provide that contact information to me as soon as possible, because housing has opened and housing can close rather quickly, and so I'd like to be able to do all at one time. Um, I also ask that each trustee provide me a copy of their bio and a current folder, and to email it to me so that we can update, update the website, because we are in the process of trying to get back to normal as much as possible. I have your commission cards that I will give you at the end of the meeting. Those new trustees who did not get them on the ninth, I have those for you today, as well as for you, Mr. Mayor, and for trustee Zupan. Something else that I would like to start doing, and that is to share with you the FOIA requests, just so that you know exactly what's being responded to and how we are responding. Uh, and I will start with the date of five nine, we received two requests, no, we received one request that day, and, um, the contractor wanted to know information on all of the village account balances since the last day of Mayor Hanks' administration, including information on each account and which ones were legally obligated to pay. They wanted to know about petty cash, expenses, and listing of income and sources. That was referred to Mohan, and we replied to that, uh, request on the sixteenth of May, so we considered that case closed. Then on five fifteen, two thousand seventeen, we received another request, and this was for the contract regular services to spray village hall and the senior center for bugs, and they also wanted an exterminator's report. That was referred also to Barnicki, and we replied to that on the sixteenth, so we met that five-day deadline. Then on the sixteenth, we received a FOIA request from Sean Collins of the Randall and Miller Associates, and they wanted to know an outstanding balance on foreclosed property, and that was referred to Cindy, and we handled it not as a FOIA, but we simply sent them the information as a matter of operations, and we responded the exact same day on that one. And then on the twenty-second, we received another notice, uh, from Rutledge and Associates, and they wanted a fire report and the date of incident for an activity that took place that was referred to Sheriff Stoffregen, and he advised that I send a notice to the company advising them of the process for receiving such information, and that there is a fee, and no FOIA was requested as well. So we have been meeting all of our FOIA obligations in a timely manner. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, village engineer, Jim Zarnik.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two upcoming projects that I wanted to talk about. First, the MFT-CBG resurfacing project, and also the sewer cleaning. Those are projects we received bids for, and they will be awarded shortly. And then, uh, once that occurs, then we'll kick those projects off with a pre-construction meeting, and we'll be going on both of those this summer, so look for that work to be continued very soon. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarnik. Our reports of the departments, committees, and commissions, finance administration, Mr. Mohan.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Due to the observance of Memorial Day, in Monday, the village hall is closed. And the next day is the party thing. The auditors are here. They have started already the preliminary work. They completed yesterday and today. They will be there on June third, and they'll be here for three weeks. And, uh, we're planning to get the audit done by the end of July, or later.
Thank you, Mr. Mohan. Fire department, Chief Stoffregen.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Welcome, Mayor and Board. Working together in good communication, and all the departments working together, we should be able to help this village move forward. Summer is here, make sure you get your air conditioners and everything around them away from them so they don't get plugged up. And, uh, your detectors, we need to have new batteries put in them. As most of you know, we had a bad fire on Carol last week. No one was hurt. All the surrounding companies did a great job. We are looking for new firefighters. If you have the time, stop by the station for an application. Also, over the past three weeks, the fire department responded to forty-five calls, fourteen fire alarms, three lift assist, five ambulance PD assist, two mutual aids out of town, one vehicle fire, seven auto accidents, two structure fires, two box alarms, gas leaks, and one stove.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, police department chief, Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees. For a period between May first and May twenty-third, the department received seven hundred and seventy-four calls for service and had seventeen arrests. Uh, case of interest, in light of the tragic terrorist attack which occurred yesterday in Manchester, England, I want to remind everyone that it is very important to remain vigilant, no matter where you're at. The Department of Homeland Security has a motto, "See something, say something." When you are out and observe something suspicious or out of the ordinary, be sure to say something to someone right away. Cop on a rooftop. This year's cop on a rooftop took place on May nineteenth under less than favorable weather conditions. Despite the cold wind and rain, the volunteers collected over a thousand dollars for the Illinois Special Olympics. I'd like to thank Dunkin' Donuts for the use of their facility, along with my sincere gratitude to the following volunteers: Judy Cast, Mary Klopp, Arlene Stoffregen, Alvinna Daniels, trustee Linda Todd, Saw Village Police Department Nicole Welch and Sergeant Jack Evans, Saw Village Fire Department Paul Myers, Eric Luther, and Stephen Barrett, the village, uh, Saw Village Public Works for setting up and taking down the tables in the rain. I'd also like to thank the mayor and other trustees who stopped by to offer their support for our efforts. All in all, it was a great event. Finally, I'd like to mention that we will continue to collect money if you're interested in donating or buying a T-shirt for Special Olympics. Stop by the police station. DEA prescription drug drop-off. Uh, this is, this is old, but we always do a great job with this. The Saw Village Police Department again participated in the collection of unwanted prescription drugs. We partnered with DEA, invited the public to drop off their potentially dangerous and unwanted medicines at the police department. The collection took place on Saturday, April twenty-nine, while we collected approximately eighteen pounds of unwanted prescription drugs. If you think about those small containers and how small those built, eighteen pounds is a lot of drugs. The service was free of charge, and we appreciate everyone's participation in the program. Since this has been so successful, the department will continue to participate in the program. We will notify everyone on the next, next drop-off date as soon as we get it from DEA. Note of appreciation. I received a, a letter of appreciation from Mr. Hugh Simpson from Wagner Elementary School, District one sixty-eight, which I'd like to read. It said, "Dear please Chief Kowalski, I'd like to take a moment to compliment one of your employees, Mr. Simpson. The crossing guard at the corner of Orion and Saw Trail has been an asset to the children of district, school District one sixty-eight. He is at his post every morning in every type of weather, reading and guiding children. It is evident that our children's safety is his concern. Community members such as Mr. Simpson deserve to be recognized. Sincerely, Gina Myse Yunas, Assistant Principal, uh, Principal at Wagner School." That ends my report.
Thank you, Chief. I just wanted to say that, um, your cop on top, I mean, it, it poured. It just, just rained, it poured, and the people that you had out there were true troopers, especially the ones that were right there in front of Dunkin' Donuts, they had to go inside, and it was cold. So to raise that kind of money in that, in that instance was very, very commendable. And I do like to thank, to thank the, um, people that I saw that was out there and the ones that I didn't see that were out there that volunteered for that. That's what we have to do, volunteers is what makes this village great. Um, emergency management, um, director Alan Veveri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board of Trustees. Uh, at this time, I just have one thing. Um, I'm trying to draw up some plans and some guidelines to restaff my department. Uh, a lot of people know that I'm only down to two people, me and my deputy chief. We're gonna work together with the mayor and the board and the village to restaff my department so we can make it a better place and, uh, make the community better for us. That is all.
Thank you, sir. And I'm hoping that you can make that happen, because as I said before, we need, we need all the services that we have. Police, fire, PM, uh, emergency management, everything. Um, public works, Mr. Kevin Welber.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is working. Um, just have a few items here, I did, uh, hear the public has some concerns and complaints. Uh, some of these items will be mentioned here today. Um, staff has been out working, uh, beginning of season here. We usually try to approach some of the last year's dig sites that we've had. We have a total of sixty-five dig locations. Um, presently, we've completed twenty of those locations from landscaping. Um, some of those sites, there's about five or six of them that have some concrete work. Uh, hopefully with work with the budget, we'll be able to accomplish taking care of those this year. Um, this, this season, we had an early start to the season, so we had a month ahead of time where the grass started growing earlier this year. So, uh, we are trying to keep up with all the village locations. We have about forty-nine of the village locations, and we have about a dozen of the detention retention areas that we are maintaining. Those are the ones that are behind right now. They're all flooded still, um, they're saturated, we cannot even get too close to them without getting stuck, which would do a lot more damage. Um, staff also completed south side shut-off list. Um, seems like the shut-off list, to me at least, are going, getting smaller, so, uh, looks like everybody's, uh, paying their bills on time, that's a great thing. We still have some, um, some addresses on the list, which we call jets or digs. We, uh, will be sending out a crew to be starting on the jet list first, and then, uh, we'll be moving into the dig list. Uh, the first branch pickup this season, which we only have two for the year, is, is completed. It was completed on May twelfth, um, everything went pretty well. Um, whenever branches are put out, most of the time, if it's put out for their pickup for the beginning of the year, uh, we just ask residents to pile those, those piles neatly to the curb. Uh, we will, um, announce if there's any special pickups throughout the season. If we have some wind events or some of these trees that we're, uh, dealing with right now that are, uh, they're pretty bad off, some of them, they're losing branches. All residents have to do is call the village hall, and we'll try to address those as soon as possible. Saw Trail, that will be on June sixth, um, and that will be till completed. Also, staff has been out, uh, we started a month early on this also because of the warm weather. Um, the street surface is softer, um, during the warmer months, or the beginning of the warmer months, it's wet and soft. So we had a lot more pothole problems this year. Uh, we did a lot of our pothole work, um, when we repaired them into cold patch, which is a temporary patch material. Um, the, the plants opened up first of May. We had started, some of the sections east side of town, we've started doing some of the permanent patch repair. So if there's any potholes in your area, don't hesitate to call the village hall, and we will be addressing those. Um, okay, uh, streetlights. It's a issue that we're having right now, we've got roughly around forty-nine streetlights we're having some complaints about, um, another ten that we have definite power problems. Uh, each of these are being addressed. We did have a meeting with ComEd to try to see if they can assist us, and, uh, they're assuring us that their, their end of that will, will move smoothly. And the last item is, um, grass cutting, um, debris into the street. Every season, we have complaints from residents saying that the streets are flooded during flood, during rain events. Most of these problems are from residents cutting their grass or debris into the streets. It is against village organs, and we're asking that the police or the enforcement assist us to help the residents not do that. Uh, we would like to keep Saw Village as clean as possible. Throwing the debris into the roadway rather than do a garbage can does not help the town stay clean. Uh, and that concludes my report.
Question. Trustee Jones?
Um, there was some talk about, um, repairs done to the sewer, uh, connecting to this detention pond here. Um, how far along, or is there anything, is there any truth to that?
The, we had a conversation with Sigma, um, their managers were out of, out of town at the time. Uh, we were right in the same process of changing over the, uh, the government here, so the process got stalled there. But, uh, temporarily, what we did was we jetted out the line to make sure that we were having at least flow through there, and that will move on here in the next month to get completed, to do it directly.
Until then, uh, could we, uh, put the vessel back up, or... Until then, could we put the vessel back up or what are we going to do with that? Because that summer cap is starting on the twelfth.
Yes, they're going to be for the weekend because you have some events going on this weekend, usage of the park area here, I believe. So they'll be addressing that when they cut the grass tomorrow in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Question.
Trustee Brewer?
Mr. Welber, before I got became trustee, on this blackness block, I think it's constant, we talked about the house that she's talking about, and Julie, you guys are just cutting the front and the back is like wooded area, you know, it comes, begins wooded. So is the policy just to cut the front and not the back? Because they were concerned on that block that only the front of the houses were cut, you know, and during the grass cutting season back there. So, you know, they were concerned because a lot of animals and stuff are getting in the back, and the cut is in the front, so I don't see us wasting time and money just to cut the front.
Well, the goal was, we don't have the manpower, obviously, to continue to cut. We tried to cut every, at least the front yards for the look and some of the side of the properties, but the goal was just to get every house cut through once at least. So we did not get into the backyard.
So was the policy now just to cut the front?
We're currently working on that.
Communities Development, Ms. Sherri Javitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to give you an update on the leans. We have a hundred and twenty-seven total that are not paid, equaling a hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. We have, we've had seventy-four paid, equaling eighty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents. And I'm going to continue to do leans. I just sent out some letters for outstanding water bills. Anything over five hundred and above, I send a letter to, giving them fourteen days to pay the bill and pull. If they don't, then the lien is placed. We broke, code enforcement has wrote nine hundred and fifteen tickets since January first until May twenty-second. Two hundred and four of them are for grass from April and May. I continue to keep republic updated on the vacant and new move-in lists so we don't get charged for houses that, you know, they're not keeping up garbage and charging us for. So I stay on that weekly. I update them daily on new move-ins. Business license renewal is completed with the remainder of one. A ticket was issued, and the corporate headquarters called me yesterday and today. They paid the fine and they are overnighting a check. So once that gets complete, all our businesses will be current with their business licenses. And that concludes my report. Just to add on, I know everybody complains about the tall grass with the vacant properties. The mayor and myself have had a couple of conversations on how to go about rectifying the problem. The public really has to understand that it's not easy to locate these banks and owners on the houses. We run PIN numbers. They come back to a certain bank. We ticket the bank. The bank brings paperwork in. It's like the banks bounce these houses from one house to another, the banks. And then it's really a hard task, and we just, I have one cold person. We do the best we can. If we have ownership, we write the tickets. So just so you understand, I have one behind me that's neck-high, too. So I do understand it's unsightly. And the mayor assured me that maybe we'll get some summer help in here to at least start knocking some of them down, but we are aware of the problem. And that will conclude my report.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Out of the nine hundred and fifteen tickets that were issued, about how many of those, you know, did we collect on? And then also, for the people who are dodging the tickets per se, do we have any kind of policy in place when we eventually collect our money?
I can't understand what you're asking me.
So out of the nine... Can you hear me now? Okay, there you go. So out of the nine hundred and fifteen tickets that were issued, about how many do we collect? How many were paid? And then also, for the people who try to dodge the tickets and not pay, do we have a policy in place that eventually we collect our money?
Yeah, I don't know offhand if how many tickets have been paid current to current. We hold a court call every month on a Thursday night. Our turnout is very low. I'm not painting a pretty picture there, it's very low. The people don't care. So what happens after court, when they don't show, they're fined their dollar, and then we send a letter out the following day, giving them to the tenth of the following month to pay those fines. If they were, if they do not pay the fine, then the collection agency gets the ticket and then they try to collect on it. If they can't collect on it, all those tickets are being turned over to the comptroller, State of Illinois Comptroller, and they're starting to garnish people's wages, and we're getting, I don't know how much money we've got, we have to ask Mohan to run a report on that. So we are seeing money and we are seeing people's wages garnished. And the other thing that the residents have to understand, if they get ten tickets for any kind of parking ticket, they will get a suspended driver's license. So these tickets do have effect down the road.
Okay. Okay.
Question. Sherri?
Yes.
Do you recall, or if there has been anybody who submitted an application for bingo license for the senior center through history?
Yeah, I don't take care of anything that deals with the senior center. I don't, I can't answer that. I don't deal with that.
Okay.
Okay, reports of trustees and board committees. As stated tonight, you guys just got the committees that you're going to be in charge of, so basically you can make your pitch or you can let anyone know what it is that, how they can contact you to get on your committee. So we'll start with Bernice Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For anybody who wants to join the senior committee, please submit a letter of consideration. Please leave it at the front desk, and we'll review it after we get the committee form. Secondly, if anybody has an organizational committee who wants to join the senior center, please let me know. There's a special form that we're going to have to fill out, and it's going to be equal to everybody across the board. Those who are interested in joining with an organization committee should submit their application as soon as possible so the committee can review it and let you know if you're able to join the senior center. Also, I talked to Kevin about some things that we needed done over in the committee center, like electrical outlets and painting the parking and that sort of stuff, and putting up some shelves, so that's going to be done. And as far as the BMW club, a lot of people told me they didn't have keys. Nobody knew who they were, so I got no information about the BMW, so that's a bust. So I had no information about them. And the last thing is that for anybody who wants to have an organization committee, it must be recognized by the state. These have to be bona fide committees so we can be across the board fair to everybody. You must have a state bona fide committee. You'll get that form in a package, but again, I have to wait until the committee is formed. We got five people now that's interested on the committee, so if you want to join, just leave your notice at the front door and I'll get back to you, let you know, yeah, no, yeah, no, about that. So of course, anybody who wants to call, my number is seven-seven-three-nine-eight-three-seven-one-three-seven. My phone is still not working here in the village and my email is not intact. So please see me at the board meeting and we can talk about whatever you need to know. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, proud trustee Bernice Brewer. Trustee Grant?
The first Finance Budget Committee meeting will be Wednesday, June twenty-first. Location to be determined. I'll let you know next meeting or so. If you're interested in joining the committee, please see me afterwards and we can discuss.
Thank you, trustee Grant. Trustee Kelvin Jones?
Well, I just want to say there's a good example of neighbors looking out for neighbors and neighbors looking out for the village. Parks and Recs was able to secure a light new refrigerator to replace that one that was pretty much almost stuck to the floor on the gym side. And that's the type of involvement that we need throughout the community, where neighbors looking out for neighbors and looking out for the community. Those types of things can happen even with crime or anything else, is looking out for your neighbor. And I appreciate the help. Summer cap registration is this Saturday, starting at ten AM to noon. Open gym is also this Saturday, starting at eleven AM to two-thirty. All kids under nine should be accompanied by an adult. There will be light refreshments, very minimal fees, nothing over a dollar. And there'll be jump rope, board games, basketball, depending on how many kids, take a vote on when the kids get there, do they want to play soccer or basketball or volleyball, depending on what the kids want to do. We'll try to switch it up a little bit. And on May first, that will be our next committee meeting.
May?
I'm sorry. June first. Yeah, the year's getting away real quick. June first. That's a Thursday, seven o'clock here at the village hall. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Cecil Tates?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. A couple of things, and I'm sorry that Director Welber left already. I saw three Public Works people cleaning up the memorial, pulling grass weeds, just making it look a lot better. Whether you know it or not, we're having a Memorial Day service celebration on Memorial Day at eleven o'clock. It'll be at the memorial, so everyone's invited to come out. So I'd be glad to see they were out there today sprucing up the area a little bit. Something else that I've been working on the last couple of days, we're trying to get a guest speaker to come out. We want to do a dedication that day, and I'll stop it right there, dedication. We want to do something, so we're trying to find a guest speaker to come out on Memorial Day to assist us a little bit. The thing that we've heard tonight is about volunteers, people helping out, giving whatever they can give, the time, money, to help us out a little bit. I received two cards of appreciation from two elected officials, Clerk Martha Campbell Pruitt and trustee Grant gave a letter of cards of appreciation for the dinner that was held, the inauguration dinner that was held at the community center. And I'm going to pass those things on. Volunteers want to be appreciated, so by them doing that, I'm going to pass that information on to the volunteers. We had a lot of volunteers that were involved to pull that off. That's with the food, decorating and everything else that went into it. And I think that volunteers need to be acknowledged or at least recognized and the word passes on. So I thank those two individuals for their cards of appreciation that I might pass on to all the volunteers that we had who came out for the inauguration dinner that we had. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Tates. Trustee Linda Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right now, I have nothing scheduled for either one of the committees as far as a date. With beautification, we need a lot of volunteers. There's a lot to do when it comes to that committee. Right now, though, we have our adoptive spots, and Baltimore is going to plant on, well, I call it Route Thirty, but it's actually Torrance. And Smith's is going to take Three-Ninety-Four and McDonald's, which they take that all the time. The beautification committee, we did purchase pots for the back of the village, but we still have them at Smith's because the weather, when it's so cold, we kind of wanted to get established. So hopefully, I'll get those in the next couple of days. If not, it'll be beginning of the week. I have flowers to plant in the front, here, just in this little section, because in the front of the village hall, it's extremely windy and things don't really do well in pots there. I also am going to go into the atrium, and I will be weeding that and putting flowers. And one of the employees was talking about the tables that we have back there. Now, there's one missing, and there's umbrellas that go in there. So I don't know that anybody utilizes it to sit in there, but I am going to go in there and get it cleaned up, and I've got to talk to Kevin about getting the umbrellas because I think they're at Public Works. So of course, I'm always looking for volunteers. And for the ordinance review committee, I'm still working on getting that together, but once I do, I will announce the date and the time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Todd. And now to our newly appointed trustee, trustee Elizabeth Zuppan. And I'd like to say congratulations also.
Thank you. I don't know if this is working, but I generally have a loud mouth, and people tell me they don't generally have a problem hearing my loud mouth. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor and the board for their vote of confidence in my appointment, and at the same time, I'd like to let everybody know I'm really looking forward to serving you, the residents of our village. Thank you.
Okay, new business. I'll entertain a motion for to approve the ordinance drafted to abolish the position of village administrator.
So moved.
Second. It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Jones. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tates?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zuppan?
Abstain.
Motion's carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance drafted to abolish the position of public safety director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Tates, second by trustee Jones. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tates?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zuppan?
Abstain.
Motion's carried. Motion to approve the ordinance drafted to establish the position of economic development director is moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Grant. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer?
Abstain.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tates?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zuppan?
Abstain.
Motion carried. I'd like to table item D, so we're going to move on, we're going to table that item. We'll move on to item E, motion to approve a resolution designating the liquor commissioner. No, you don't. I'm sorry. That's something that we don't have to vote on also because it's a designation. Thank you. That's why they put erasers on these. Item F, motion to approve the ordinance amending Chapter Six and to create R-two liquor license. One at a time. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Tates and second by trustee Jones. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tates?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zuppan?
Can I just say, you didn't ask for any questions or comments beforehand, but just so everybody knows, I'm abstaining from these because I don't have any of the information that the resident board had, so once again, abstain.
Motion is carried, so noted. You're absolutely right, I didn't say question. Okay, motion to approve the transfer of fifty thousand dollars from the water and sewer account to the general fund. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
It was moved by trustee Grant and second by trustee Jones. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Just one thing that, oh, there he is. Mr. Mohan had attempted to answer when we were talking about this earlier. Is that people must realize, or should realize, that we're operating under the old budget. So if there's a shortfall, I feel we have an obligation to try to make up for that shortfall from that old budget. Now, when the new budget is done and approved by the board, then we'll hopefully receive less of this transfer of funds. But while we're operating under the old budget, which everyone knows is unbalanced, while we're doing that, I think that's why we see $50,000 being transferred.
Question? I know, trying to piggyback on what trustee Zupan was saying. Can we go back to A and B? Because I'd just like to know, how much money will we save into abolish these two positions?
Well, we can revisit where I can answer the question.
Oh, what can I?
We can revisit the motion after it's been moved and passed. But the question, which you're talking about, over $120,000.
For both positions?
Yes.
And how much money would be, is for the economic development director? For the ordinance when the position is up?
You're talking about the position itself?
Yes.
Around 60, 65, I think you have a copy of that. 68.
68.
But we're still on this motion.
Okay.
Well, we have a chance, we can talk about it later. Madam clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Brewer?
We're voting on transferring the $50,000?
This is number G.
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tates?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Abstain.
Motion carried. Okay. Item H. You had, we've had a chance to look at the finances and procedures that was brought to you guys about a week ago. Just want you guys to keep that in mind. That's some homework to kind of look over. Because we will be, I just didn't want to vote on it now, because it's going to take a little time, because it's not one or two pages. So just look over those procedures, and if you have any questions, we will entertain those at the next committee meeting, which will be on the 6th.
Question?
Yes.
With that, with the budget and finance committee being established tonight, are they going to get the opportunity to look at that packet also?
Yes, every trustee has a copy.
I just got mine.
Okay, every trustee, but not every trustee has a copy. Also, I reviewed the strategic plan for progress. We had talked about this also, but as I stated before, it's a lot to look at. That's something I want the board to think about, so we can adopt it. And that's something we were talking left at the next committee meeting, so I just want you guys to take a look at it and review it. Any questions, any comments, please bring it back at the committee meeting. Item J, I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable from May 10th to May 23rd.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Grant. Any questions?
Questions?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan, do you have a copy? With? Looking at the second page, it has mayor's pictures, Hoover Sports, and amount of $307,000, $307,078. Line item is 101010768.00.
That's on the back of the front page, the credit card purchases. Yeah.
That's again?
Those are credit card purchases. But I'll tell them where to look at, they can see it.
Oh, okay.
On the back of the front page, the credit card purchases, yeah.
Looking at page one, that's the bottom of page one. It's item 93936. We have gas charges of $1,100, $1,100 odd dollars that came from the general fund. That's for Heritage FS Inc. And the last item says gas charges.
Oh, yeah, that's for gas charges.
For whom is that charge to?
For public commons and services.
Okay. And the same thing applies if you go to the next page, page two. And the line item is 1025.620.00. Heritage FS Inc. again appears. Okay. And above that, we have Quill Corporation. For the police department. Then, could you look at page three? And if you go down to 813, contract base. At the bottom of the page, 1020220.620.00. Now, that says streets. Now, earlier, we had public grounds and buildings. What's the difference? Again, looking at page four. That says audit, is that for the last? That's 215, 216, okay. That's the last one that I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So it was charged to the wrong department?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Brewer?
I talked to Mohan a bit last week, and I find that once he gives out these accounts receivable, they don't have enough information for us, well, for me, that make an informed decision. We don't know if we paying these people, or why we paying the vendors, everything, especially Robinson Engineering. They've been paying on here quite a bit of money, I don't know what it's for. I can't vote on something that I don't know why they paying, and I imagine it's a legitimate invoice, but we don't have information, we don't have enough information to say, well, that's okay. And I don't know if anybody's approved it, or looked at it, or anything. As I go through, I have a bunch of questions. Now, he has, on page five, he has water department under there, and it says water department, vehicle expenses, but one of the items on there is concrete mix. What does that have to do with, I mean, it's just a question, I'm just saying, I don't know. Because we talked about this before, you gave the explanation, but anybody looking at it, they wouldn't know what that is for. Also, on page five, they got state treasurer, we paying for traffic light maintenance. We don't know what area that's for, or anything. I mean, by us being, we don't know certain things, okay? Well, the point I'm trying to make is that the accounts receivable, accounts payable, as we get it, doesn't have enough detail for us to make an informed decision.
Okay.
So I was hoping to get a little bit more detail when you give out.
Sorry. The reason being, we have a recording character that we need to, that is, we cannot, what's more important, do I?
We can't hear Mohan.
What I would like to interject here, and trustee Brewer. We're trying to get, and we can, and I think Mohan has done it, but we're going to try to get the accounts payable out to you by Thursday, so you can have a chance on Friday and Monday to come in and ask him in detail. Because to put the details on here, and why, and how, and what was the reason that we're paying this, this report will be about 20 pages long, because you have to list. But to talk and ask him, he's here every day, come by and talk, and ask him, can I sit down and ask you about this? We're going to try to make sure that he has his accounts payable by Thursday, so therefore, you can get it by Friday disseminated to you. Then you have Friday and Monday to come and discuss it with him, ask him what's?
I agree with you, and I talked to Mohan all week, and I was just putting it out there that
Sure.
it doesn't have enough detail for anybody to really grasp what's going on with the accounts payable. Page seven, they got root cut, Calumet City Plumbing. What was the root cut, and why? You know, we paying $2,100 for that.
Mr. Kevin Willer, the Public Works Director, will be able to let you know in detail. If you can come well before the meeting, I should be more than happy to let you know the information moving forward.
That's my question, yeah.
Question? Yes.
I know we spoke about it in the past, about separating the payroll or the accounts payable. Is that doable? I mean, because we have separate, it's being paid separately. So I was just wondering, so that when questions arise like this, we make sure the employees are paid versus we getting over here and not being able to pay the employees because of some things that we can't get taken care of maybe tomorrow, or, you know, or a couple of days down the road.
Okay, so you're saying payroll is separate, if you look on the front, it is separate?
But it's voted on.
It's voted on together, because it is accounts payable. It is, it is a, it's under that heading. But I see what you're saying, you're saying that can it be voted on, just payroll and then accounts, or bills, as you call it, separate? I'll have to talk and find out. I do understand, so in going forward, if we don't have money, that we at least be able to do that? That's something we can segregate as we vote. In other words, as we vote on it, we have done it in the past, where we vote on just payroll, to pay payroll and necessities, and we have to rename those. And that's the way it used to be. So that's something we can look at, to say that, okay, we will pay payroll, everything else has to wait until we can get the money. So that's always an option for a trustee to say. That's always an option. Any more questions?
Can I make a suggestion possibly? Mohan, I don't know how late you're here, or if you're here until 5 o'clock on Mondays, but maybe on the meetings when we're getting ready to vote on accounts payables, Mondays at 4 o'clock, you're making yourself available so that we can have a standing meeting to come up and ask questions of accounts payables, and we're not eating up individually with potentially the same questions.
Absolutely not.
So then you want to schedule, which we can work on that, that was a good idea, that on Mondays from 4 to 5, he's available for trustees, so he can answer their questions. That's something we can do. No, they come, that's not open meetings, that violation. That's them asking about the money. So they're not having the meeting, they're just asking him probably one at a time. Are there any other questions? Madam clerk, would you please call the row?
Trustee Brewer?
Abstain.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tates? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Abstain.
Motion carried. Okay, last item. Comments from the board and trustees. We'll start at the right side, trustee Todd, and come around.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing at this time.
Trustee Brittany Brewer?
Mr. Mayor, I understand that, and residents should understand that we're new at this, and that we have to ask a lot of questions. And I'm hoping that you guys will give us a little break here, because a lot of things we don't know, and we're learning. Just like this accounts payable report, I would like a little information available to us. I don't vote on anything that I don't have supporting documents for. A lot of things I had sat here and voted on, that's abstaining or no, that's because I didn't understand it, nor did I have supporting documents for anything that I voted on. That's a no-no for me. Unless somebody could explain to me why this would be in our best interest, I'm talking about the residents and trustees ourselves, I would not entertain the thought. I've been sitting here, listening to other people, maybe they understand, they may not, but I'll tell you, I don't understand something, I don't. So either I'm going to vote no, yes, because of the patent, I wasn't here, I'm going to vote no. I got an ordinance today, I don't understand, I'm still going to vote no. So even though the board might vote yes in favor, I don't understand it. It's not certain to people in their best interest for me to vote for something I don't understand. And that's the end of what I'm going to say.
Trustee Tate?
I did mention earlier that the IGRC meeting will be held late in June because we had a conflict of schedules. So it will be on the 28th of June will be the IGRC meeting. That's all I have.
Trustee Jones?
Hope to see you all out Saturday. You can even just stop by and see and ask questions as far as summer camp, and as far as anything that's going on with Parks and Recreation. And we are always looking for volunteers, and that's it.
Trustee Elizabeth Zupan?
I would just add to the ask for volunteers. I need to get with the mayor to understand what his plans are for the public safety committee, and then digest that, come up with some thoughts of my own, and get back with him. But once I have that together, I'm happy to talk to anybody who's interested in joining the committee and volunteering with me in that effort. Thank you.
Trustee Grant?
No comment at this time, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to make an observation and a observation. I attended, and I just wanted to say, this is the first time since I've been a trustee, that we had 100% participation at the eighth grade graduation that was held. That happens to be your school board president, Tammy Jones. I've been coming, I used to come, and I've been coming to those graduations for like 11 years. I've been, I used to come, and I've been coming to those graduations for like 11 years. And it's the first time that a full board at the time attended that. That's something that I'm kind of proud of. It was held at Bloom Trail. Even that place seemed like it was too small. But it was really, really well attended. I think the reason why they moved it there is so they could have more of the family of these students to come. But the school district did a great job. So I just want to commend them, and also I want to commend the board for like I stated, 100% participation, that was something. So if there's more to come, that's what's going to happen, I appreciate it. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. It was moved by trustee Todd and second by trustee Brewer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose this. Motion carried. Thank you very much.